Good evening, everyone. I am calling this Monday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, Planning Commission meeting to order at six thirty P. M. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person, or the public may also watch this meeting online at Burnsville, Minnesota, MN, BurnsvilleMN.gov/Meetings, or view us on Comcast Channel sixteen or eight fifty-nine. The public can also join us on Zoom by going to zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the agenda. All right, first agenda topic is the adoption of the agenda tonight. Commissioners, any changes to the agenda? Same non-staff. No changes? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving along on the agenda. Second topic is approval of the minutes from our August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Any changes to those minutes? Any non-staff changes?
Nope, no changes at this time.
Can I get a motion? To approve the minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Beautiful, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, we are through to our third agenda topic, which is a public hearing of an application of D R F Concrete Construction for a conditional use permit for an open storage lot at eleven-five forty-five Twelfth Avenue South. Being presented by our community development assistant, Kevin Trusson.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. Tonight before you is a public hearing for an application of D R F Concrete Construction for a conditional use permit for an open storage lot. It's at one-one-five-four-five Twelfth Avenue South. So you can see the site here. It's zoned I-one Industrial Park, and it's also guided as Industrial Park on our two thousand and forty comprehensive plan. It's surrounded by all industrial uses. To the north and south, we have other warehouse-type uses. To the west is Center Point Energy Site, and to the east is a bus garage. So a little bit of background on the site. It was originally platted in nineteen seventy-six as River Bluffs First Edition. It was a subdivision of four lots. The northernmost lots in that were all administratively replatted into one larger lot, and that's how the site ended up developing with the warehouse structure as it is today. The applicant, D R F Concrete Construction, currently is based out of Saint Paul. They've indicated to us that they would like to purchase this property and occupy it by the first of next year. Their proposal tonight is for a couple of conditional uses. So they need a conditional use permit for a proposed seven thousand two hundred and thirty square foot open storage lot, and that would be located in the northernmost portion of their site, in the front yard off of one hundred and fifteen, one hundred and fifteenth Street East. They also need a conditional use permit for an eight-foot chain-link fence with slats that would be utilized for screening, and then additional screening would be provided with some additional landscaping. So I thought I'd show you a site plan right away to kind of give you an idea of what's going on here. So in the dark gray area here is the proposed new area. So this is north on their site. Right in this area is the actual open storage lot that they're seeking a conditional use permit for. Currently, their site has access over here and down here, and there's some loading docks along this eastern side. They're looking to construct new loading docks on the northern side of the building, which would then improve traffic flow for semis coming through the site. So that it would be a one-way access. They would be entering off of Twelfth Avenue and then exiting onto the northern street here. There's three proposed access doors into the open storage site itself, two that would access the actual storage of materials, and then the third would go right into a trash enclosure that they're proposing to include within that storage lot. So that's just kind of a quick overview of what's going on on-site here. Yeah, like I mentioned, those two new dock doors would be on the north side of the building. They would be looking to maintain the existing dock doors on the eastern side of the building for seldom use of their own, and then for potential expansion to include a potential additional tenant in the future, but they haven't specified at this time as to when that would be coming. As far as the materials that they'll be storing, it'll be primarily scaffolding frames, lumber, steel, brick-and-stone type things, just general construction materials that they need to have storage for. It's a pretty standard storage situation that we would see in this industrial park district. They have indicated that the truck traffic for their own operation would then primarily be relocated out of the existing parking lot and through that new paved addition on the northern side of the lot. The landscaping on-site is going to be overall quite a nice enhancement. So they are required to have twenty-five percent of the site be landscaped. They're proposing twenty-seven percent, exceeding the ordinance. So it'll be a mix of sod, shrubbery, and trees. One thing to point out is that they are required three percent of their internal parking area to be landscaped. They currently do not meet that, but as they are not doing any changes to the existing parking area, that's legal non-conforming, and they do not need to do any updating to that parking area landscaping at this time. So what they're proposing is three swamp white oaks, six lilac shrubs, and three juniper shrubs, and some coral forester grasses, and it'll be an overall enhancement to the site. I'll show you here. The swamp white oaks are going to be on this, would be the western side of the site. Those are going to provide some nice screening from the road, looking in towards that truck-loading area and towards the open storage lot. They've got some shrubbery along this northern piece here. That's actually going to be on the outside of their proposed chain-link fence with the slats, so they'll be kind of getting some extra screening there. They'll have the fence that'll provide the required screening, and then the shrubbery is going to provide some nice decorative screening of the fence. So it'll be really nice-looking from the road, and then internal to the site is where they'll have the tall grass plantings that will help screen that trash enclosure area. So the fence will go around the open storage lot areas, you can see here, and then they've got their access gates within that. This is a sample that the applicant provided of the chain-link fence with slats. So you can see it, it looks really nice, and then you can see an example of some landscaping plantings on the outside of one of those. So it will overall be a really nice enhanced landscaping for this site. Parking on-site, they are more than sufficient. They are required to have thirty-nine stalls, so the warehouse use would require thirteen stalls, the open storage use requires four, and the office would require twenty-two stalls. We calculated the parking for the entire building, just to assume that they would have that expansion that they mentioned of a potential future tenant. They are proposing having seventy stalls on-site, so they're not even close to being over or underparked in this situation. So it actually, by rerouting the semi-traffic for their operation into that northern site, it provides a major benefit to the site since it'll be safer and more efficient to not have the higher volume of semis going through that staff parking area. So, yep, like, like I mentioned, they've got the three dock doors and the one drive door on the east side that will remain for potential expansion with future tenants. Some planning considerations is that their overall plan will provide a much safer and more efficient flow to the site. It's extremely compatible with other surrounding industrial uses, with outdoor storage lots being very common in this industrial park area. We don't anticipate any adverse impacts to the adjacent properties, and it exceeds overall landscaping and parking requirements. So with that, we have our recommendation tonight. As staff recommends, the Planning Commission recommend to the city council the approval of the conditional use permit for an open storage lot and chain-link fence with slats at one-one-five-four-five Twelfth Avenue South, subject to the following seventeen conditions. The project shall be completed in accordance with the submitted plans and as amended by the conditions of approval. Any significant changes to the plans as determined by planning staff shall require review and approval by the Planning Commission and City Council. Conditional use permit approvals shall expire one year from the date of city council approval unless a building permit has been requested or a time extension has been granted by the city council. The city council may extend the expiration date of such approval upon written application by the person to whom the approval was granted. That's basically just to say that they will come in for a building permit within a year, or they can get an extension with council approval. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, a letter of credit or cash security in the amount of not less than one hundred percent of the total estimated landscaped value shall be submitted. Landscape financial security shall be held for two full growing seasons. In the event additional parking is needed on the site, the applicant shall work with the city to implement additional staff parking on-site. The chain-link fencing shall be black, all-weather vinyl coated. Fencing shall be maintained and kept in good condition. If the privacy slats are damaged, broken, or degraded, they shall be replaced within a timely manner. Material storage shall not be stacked higher than eight and a half feet. Sinage is not permitted on the fence. If any modifications to signage are to occur on-site, a permanent sign permit must be obtained. Exterior storage of materials shall not be permitted outside of the approved area. If the approved outdoor storage area is unused for material storage for a period of six months or more, the fence shall be removed upon notification from the city. And a building permit is required for the proposed fence. Access gates shall remain closed for when vehicles are entering or exiting the storage area. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, planning staff shall approve a final fencing plan. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, planning staff shall approve a final landscaping plan. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, all items from the engineering comment memo dated August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the city engineer. A stormwater maintenance agreement will be required prior to the issuance of a building permit, and the conditional use permit shall be signed and returned to the planning staff prior to the issuance of a building permit. With that, this is a public hearing tonight, and I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, beautiful job. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
Great presentation.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, with that, I believe it is time to open the public hearing at six forty-four. So if anyone wishing to speak... Actually, do we pull up the applicant? No, okay. If anyone wishing to speak to this would like to, you can state your name and address for the record and approach the podium.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Joe Raddick with Contour Civil Design. I'm here on behalf of D R F Construction. The applicant, thank you for having us here for the conditional use permit. We are in agreement, general agreement, with the conditions proposed tonight. We did want to ask the commission to consider a twelve-foot height for storage. That just allows the end-user to store some more materials in that confined space, so other than that, we're generally happy with the conditions, but we would like for a little more storage capability in that north area.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
Kevin, can they, does by city code, do they have to stay at the eight and a half feet?
Yes, they, that is in city code that the storage would have to be to the eight and a half feet.
So can we amend that by conditional use permit?
Yes, we can amend that.
If I can add, commissioners, ordinance requires the product to be one hundred percent screened by fence. So reason why the eight and a half was added, because generally, in most cases, if you drive past these places, there is a little storage that goes above the fence. That's why we usually do the eight and a half, nine feet. So per code, it needs to be screened by a hundred percent. So if they want twelve-feet storage, the fence would have to go up to probably ten feet or twelve feet. That's just the way the code is written. So that's up to the applicant, if they're willing to increase the height of the fence up to ten feet, and we can maybe live with two feet over, if you guys are comfortable with that as a commission, saying ten-foot fence with a two-foot overhang. Depends on direction the planning commission would like to go with that item.
Commissioner Allen.
Are there other examples of storage fencing that is, exceeds eight feet, that you're aware of?
Yeah, yes, Commissioner. Last year, we approved for United Paper Products or Packaging Products, yes, UPI. United, yeah, whatever. Case twenty-four dash twenty-seven, we approved a fence that was ten feet high and allowed for storage to go above that up to twelve feet, because they had some storage of materials. Actually, they want twelve, they have a twelve-foot fence, I believe, and they have storage materials up to fourteen feet. That's what we did, though, kind of allow for some flexibility. As we know, the intended ordinance is a hundred percent screening, but it's hard because there's always stuff that goes above that fence line. It's no matter what you do. So I'd still give a little grace with that, but...
So... Is that something that we approve or goes back to city staff?
Nope, the planning commission can improve, sorry, Commissioner. The planning commission can amend the conditions of approval to require the applicant to either install a taller, what I would recommend is that the applicant works with city staff to either raise the height of the fence up to ten feet, or, or they can store product up to maybe ten feet. We'll see, you know, we can talk to the applicant and see what they think about that. I could work on a condition too, in the meantime, to bring back to the council here if there's, or the commission here if there's more questions for the applicant.
We also do have a condition in there allowing staff to approve a final fencing plan, so we can work with that as well.
So one of the stated, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just have probably more of a question for the applicant, but what are the materials that will be above the ten-foot? If we approve the ten-foot fence, what are two additional feet, the materials anyway?
It's really the twelve-foot number that allows us to store three pallets of block. Other than that, we don't anticipate any other materials going beyond that, you know, eight and a half, nine-foot, but that kind of allows us those three pallets high, and that would be it.
Okay.
Commissioner Allen.
Was one of the, was the eight-foot fence listed as one of the conditions?
We have a condition about stacking no higher than eight and a half feet, so that would be the condition that you could amend.
There's no condition that refers to the height of the fence, not the, this is the height of the material.
The applicant states in the approved, submitted site plans that the fence is eight feet in height currently. As proposed.
That was in the, okay.
And the code is eight feet?
The code is for a hundred percent screening, so it can be as high as they want it to be, but we'd need the hundred percent screening. That's what we're going for.
Not to do method deis, can I ask the applicant a question? How many pallets of this do you plan on storing on-site?
I'll ask David.
Yeah, can you come up to the podium, please? Just have your name and record, name and address on record.
Hi, David Jocelyn. Sorry, you need my address as well. It's a five-nine-five Randolph Avenue in Saint Paul.
Perfect.
We're probably talking maybe twenty-ish. It fluctuates a little bit. A lot of times what this is, is like excess materials from construction sites that are coming in and out. We might need to store some stuff temporarily at our yard before we bring it out to a project. So it would fluctuate a little bit, but, you know, I would say like twenty to, twenty to thirty-ish, and we have room behind the fence, so it's not like all of that material would necessarily need to be stacked right up against the fence. It'd be depth into the storage area as well.
All right, one more follow-up question, if you don't mind. Playing Christian, are you guys comfortable with a ten-foot fence?
Yes, especially if, and if it can be stated that we do have, if you want to call it like a two-foot bumper over that, we, that would probably be our preference. We don't, I don't think anybody wants a giant sky-high fence in there, so I think that'd be a great compromise, a ten-foot fence with a two-foot grace over it. That would give us everything we needed.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Based on code, are there any guidelines of what can be stacked? Are there restrictions at all?
Commissioner, no, there is nothing in code that says it needs stacked. This needs to be screened. So that's generally when we have these kind of situations, we kind of just do what we did there. We kind of negotiate and see what it is. My sense, as we're looking at the code as an update, I think there should be a little grace with, there's always that height that sticks up above that fence. You know, it's just tricky, because you, people say they don't, don't intend to go up higher than the fence. You drive by it one day, and it's higher than the fence. So that's why you usually like to give a little leeway, especially if a conditional use permit, get that flexibility built into there, so we're not constantly have to amend it if they have different product on-site. So that's where I feel, from a staff's perspective, not to speak for Kevin here as the project manager, that the ten-foot fence with a twelve-foot overhang or twelve-foot stacking, I think that's something we can be comfortable with. It's very similar to what we did for that other project I referenced earlier.
Commissioner Allen.
Is there a way that we can, I'm not opposed to a ten-foot fence and twelve-foot high material, is there a way that we can approve this so they don't have to come back here at our next meeting?
Yep, so what I would recommend here is amending condition, when you do a recommendation or make a motion, I would make a motion to, first I would make a, let me back up here, I apologize, everyone. First, I would ask the commission to see if there's support for all the commissioners to amend condition seven, to raise that height to twelve feet. Right now, it says material storage should not exceed eight-point-five feet, so you'd raise that. And then I would add a condition stating that the fence shall be ten feet in height. So right now, we're going off the site plan, then it's memorialized, and the conditional use permit that the fence is ten feet.
If you said two feet less than the stacking, is that better?
I think that's, if we go, yeah, I think that's fine. It's consistent with what we did of the other project, allowing a little flexibility in the height of going above it slightly. I think that'd be, that's fine. Two feet, three feet's fine. When we get above that three feet, that's kind of out there. I feel that's not, you're not meeting the intent of the ordinance, from my interpretation as the zoning administrator, but I think two, three feet, you're meeting the intent. It's only a few pallets that are going to be doing it, for the vast majority, the most of the product on-site will be screened. One other option we could do is work with the applicant to store the materials closer to the building, you know, so they're not up in front there. So they store the block closer to the building and then kind of taper down as you get closer to the roadway. That's another option, but that's getting into the weeds.
So we amend number seven to ten feet or twelve feet?
Twelve feet. Number seven was the, the height of the storage. Number seven should be amended to state material storage shall not be stacked greater or higher than twelve feet in height.
So could I just add in, could if, could we, could we have it stated just up to, that way, because there is a chance that we might look at this and just say, you know, eight feet's going to be fine, and we're not going to push it. So if we just have the flexibility to go up to those heights, then we still might go...
I like that.
Yeah.
I think that's a good compromise there, up to, so...
Beautiful. Commissioners, any additional questions for the applicant? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this? All right. With that, I can close the public hearing at six fifty-five P. M. Would anyone wish to make a motion? Commissioner Allen.
I will make a motion that we amend condition seven to read material storage shall not be stacked, shall not be stacked higher than twelve feet, and then we'll add a condition, was there seventeen conditions on this? It'll be condition eighteen?
Yep.
Add condition eighteen that says the, the screen, the screen fencing, is that what we're calling it?
Screening.
Be no higher than ten feet. Is that right?
Yeah, so just to clarify, not condition eighteen, we'd say the screening fence shall be a maximum of ten, at a maximum of ten feet, and that kind of leads the applicant to kind of figure out how they want to do it. So they go up to ten feet, it's twelve. If they keep it where it's at, it kind of leaves it, leaves them some flexibility.
Okay. Thank you for writing that down in a proper manner. So that, that's the first motion. It needs to be seconded and voted, and then we, okay, got it.
All right, we have a motion on the table.
A second.
Beautiful. We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, the motion has passed. Now we're on to the next agenda topic.
We want to do one more motion. That's just the motion on the conditions. We want to do one more for the, the actual approval of the item.
Got it, okay. Can I get another motion to approve the item? Commissioner Allen.
I'll keep going, yeah. So I move that we recommend to the city council the approval of the conditional use permit for an open storage lot and chain-link fence with slats at one-one-five-four-five Twelfth Avenue South, subject to the eighteen conditions as we just discussed.
Beautiful, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Throw a second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the motion has passed. All right, thank you, Kevin. On to agenda topic number four, and this is a public hearing of an application of Trumbull Properties LLC on behalf of Chimney Doctor for a conditional use permit to allow for an open storage lot at one-four-four-five-zero Ewing Avenue South, presented by our associate planner. Let her introduce herself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kira Chapman. I'm an associate planner here. I've been working here for about four months now, and I had prior experience working at the city of New Prague for about three years and did an internship in Duluth, but I just want to say thank you for having me today. I'm excited to be here and present these topics. So item number four today is an application for Chimney Doctor for a conditional use permit to allow for an open storage lot at one-four-four-five-zero Ewing Avenue South. So on the left-hand side is an aerial image of the property, highlighted in a red line, and then the right-hand picture shows the zoning of the area. It is zoned I-three office and industrial park, and it is guided as industrial office in the conference of two thousand and forty plan. There are budding properties to the north and south and east that are similarly zoned and guided, and directly west of the property is that boundary to Savage, where there are residential lots. Some general overview and history, in nineteen seventy-nine, Burnscott Industrial Park Plat was platted. That was a subdivision for twenty-one lots. The district is zoned, as previously mentioned, I-three, which allows warehousing, light manufacturing, and office uses, in which the applicant currently uses the property. Chimney Doctor moved to its current location in October, two thousand and twenty. This application was brought to, or this situation was first brought to staff's attention Um, this application was brought to, or this situation was first brought to staff's attention when there was a a complaint from a resident, um, and then staff investigated it. It was mainly about exterior storage. And this application is to get that into compliance. So the proposal is to utilize twenty thousand two hundred and, uh, two hundred square feet of the rear property for open storage space. Um, it would mainly be two different fence types that would be a maximum of eight feet tall. Uh, one of the chain li- or one of the fence types would be chain link with final slats um, on the north and south property line. And then there would be wo- solid wood fencing on the far west side of the property. And then to access the property will be a double gate, um, that's twenty-four feet wide on the east side. And it would store three containers, uh, fifteen delivery vehicles and pallets of masonry. So this conditional use permit is for open storage lots in the I three district. Um, it is also, this conditional use permit is also required for chain link fences with slats. As required by code, open storage lots must be a hundred percent screened from the ground level. Um, and industrial fences with, uh, must be at least a minimum of eight feet tall. Uh, staff suggested a solid wo- wood fence on the far west side of the, the property to best obstruct view from residential lots. And here I made an, uh, diagram to kind of illustrate those different fence types. So on the far west side, um, there is, in this pink color represents the solid wood fence that would be installed. And then to the north, um, there would be, uh, in that blue colored line. And also to the south, in also blue, represents the chain link with final slats. And then on the far east side, it would be the double gate fence, and that would be also chain link with slats. So in terms of screening, uh, as mentioned previously, open storage lots must be a hundred percent screened um, and have a minimum fence height of eight feet. Um, fences must obstruct the view when abutting residential lots and wood fencing is proposed on the west. Did I just press the same one? Oh, no, sorry. Fences must obstruct a view when abutting residential lots. Um, the wood on the west side was best to obstruct view. Staff does not have any concerns with the chain link fence because that is a common material type for industrial lots um, and is found on neighboring properties. So this proposal does not trigger any additional parking requirements. It will actually free up, um, and make more available parking in the front parking lot. Vehicles will be started on the far west side of the property, which will be in that open storage lot. There are currently nineteen stalls on the property, um, which will make it easier for employees or guests to park at that location. And, um, and for planning considerations, the proposal meets the findings for the appro- for approval of a CUP. The proposal meets the intent of the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend the city council the approval of the conditional use permit to allow an open storage lot at one four four five zero Ewing Avenue South, subject to the fourteen conditions of approval. The subject shall be completed in accordance with the submitted plans as amended by the conditions of approval. And any significant changes to the plans as determined by the planning staff shall require review and approval by planning commission and city council. Conditional use permit approvals shall expire one year from the date of the city council approval, unless a building permit has been requested or a time extension has been granted by the city council. The city council may extend the expiration date of such approval upon written application by the person to whom the approval was granted. A building permit is required for the proposed fence. Uh, the conditional use permit shall be signed and returned to the planning staff prior to the issuance of a building permit. And prior to the issuance of the building permit, planning staff shall approve a final fencing plan. Fencing shall be maintained and kept in good condition. The slat shall be securely fastened to the fence at all times. The slat, slats of the fence become damaged, broken and or degraded, it shall be replaced in a timely manner. Material storage shall not be stacked higher than eight and a half feet. And storage of materials on the containers or vehicles is prohibited. Exterior storage of materials shall not be permitted outside of the approved area, as noted in the project narrative dated August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. The fence along the western property line shall be a hundred percent opaque, solid fence. If the approved outdoor storage area is unused for, for material storage for a period of six months, the conditional use permit shall become void. A maximum of three storage containers are allowed on-site and shall be located at all times within the approved storage area. The access case shall remain closed except for when vehicles are entering or exiting the storage area. The placement, movement and stockpiling of materials in the approved storage area may only occur between seven AM to ten PM per city code. Um, that last condition, condition fourteen, was based off, um, city code. I believe it was in terms of construction. We thought that was an appropriate timeframe considering that is for construction to reduce or considered quiet hours, especially since it's near residential properties. Um, so I will turn this over to the planning commission for any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, Kira. Commissioners.
I noticed in the overhead, there's quite a few, uh, trucks in that area that'll be the storage area. Will they be there in the storage area too, whether they have materials in them or not?
So you're asking if the, the current trucks there will remain there or?
Yes.
Yeah, so the vehicles that are currently there will remain there. There's actually, as of right now, some of them are parked on that southern driveway. So a lot of those vehicles are parked there, but it, this, having this conditional use permit will, um, memorialize that to have that parking in that open storage lot.
Commissioner Allen.
Uh, thank you for the presentation.
Yeah.
The solid fencing on the residential side, the west side, was that proposed by us? Or was that, or, and, or was it discussed with the applicant or?
Yeah, so that was recommended by staff, um, to have a solid wooden fence to best provide that a hundred percent screening, especially since, um, it is abutting a residential property. And we do have in our code that we should provide a hundred percent screening and be more mindful of that when you are abutting residential properties.
Okay, and it, whether it's fence or, I should say, whether it's wood or some other s- privacy fence that?
We, we were recommending solid fencing. Um, I guess it's irrelevant, the type of fencing, but we really wanted to make sure that there were no gaps so that it couldn't be seen through or have any debris go through either.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Allen.
Uh, two questions. Do we care like how it looks on either side? Usually you got the pretty side out towards the, your neighbor. Do we care for that? As a, as staff?
I believe there's something in the city code that states that, um, the nicer portion of the fence should be facing the exterior. So from, like, if you were having a neighboring property look at yours, the nicer portion of the fence will be seen on, from the outside.
Okay, you guys will see that as part of the permitting, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. Then one more question. Uh, the noise for number fourteen, is that actually a complaint?
No, but we were just trying to think that, so part of the conditional use permit is to think of any potential adverse effects. And we were just trying to be proactive and include that condition. But I mean, that's open to discussion if that's something we don't want to include.
I, if I can add to the Kira's response, um, commission, um, this, this item did, is responsive a complaint, um, from the adjacent properties residential. And so staff worked with the applicant to address it, and that's why the wooden fence and other items have come up. There was no noise as part of the complaint. However, as part of the review, we like, like Kira said, we like to take a, think about what other impacts could be created from such uses. And since we do have in our code hours operation, we thought it would be necessary to kind of carry that over. You know, it's all right if the trucks start up before the seven o'clock time and they leave to go to the job sites. But it's more or less the delivery of materials on-site that we're worried about, the beeping and stuff like that. Of the, you know, forklifts and stuff out there constantly running is the concern. Just to add on to that for some clarification.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Just like the previous one, are we going to have issues with the fence being at eight and a half feet? Is there going to be scaffolding that's going to go beyond that level?
So in the application, they mentioned in their project narrative that, um, they would have shipping containers in the back of their property on that west side, um, along that fence. And those shipping containers are expected to be about eight and a half feet tall. And the fence is going to be eight feet tall, so you're going to have that six inches potentially visible, but with some of the vegetation already back there, maybe view of the angle, it may not be noticeable.
I'm referring to material that's stacked there like scaffolding and other material that would exceed that height. Because when I saw the site today, there was, I think there was scaffolding that went above the current fence line.
Yeah, that is correct.
So, um, if I can add, Commissioner, um, applicant, um, is here. Can, um, you add some clarification on the material stacking, please? Oh, we'll wait to the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing, then we'll let Jeff speak, Dave, sorry. Apologies. Get out of my cell.
Commissioners, do you have any more questions for staff? Commissioner Allen.
Just have one question that will probably lead into the public hearing, but I love the wood fence idea since the complaint came from the neighborhood behind it. But I also know that wood weathers quickly and can create an eyesore as much as the stacking. I know that in the ordinance, they have to keep it in good condition. But the reality is how, without a complaint from a neighbor, how, how is that ever really addressed? My concern would be, and it will be to the applicant, any thought of, uh, 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 more of a plastic material, fiberglass material instead of wood material? So the, the neighbors that initiated the complaint won't call to c- complain about the fence being dilapidated or faded or weather, whatever. I've, I've seen plenty of them, so I would hate to see that happen for the neighborhood behind them. But that will, he can probably answer that when we get to the public hearing.
Any more questions for staff? All right, with that, I will open the public hearing at seven eleven PM. We have the applicant at the podium. Can you state your name and address for the record?
David Trumble. In business or personal address?
I got business.
Business, one four four five zero Ewing Avenue South in Burnsville. Uh, in regards to the scaffolding that will be removed, there was also some items on top of the, um, storage containers, which I believe I saw in the, the writing, that will also be removed. As far as the wood fence, um, we plan on cedar. Cedar is a lot more expensive than vinyl, but we actually thought that cedar would hold up better than vinyl. But we're definitely flexible on that.
If I can add to commissioners, in my experience, um, not to speak for the applicant, um, the use of wood instead of the composite, composite can chip pretty quickly. And especially if that industry, that yard there, that'd be my concern. If they use a composite fence, that it could get damaged easily. Depending on the type of composite, there's some of that initial panels that can tip out. I can tell you a pretty good story about a project I worked on in Cottage Grove about composite fencing. It's a nightmare with it. So from a staff perspective, I think the wood fence, um, knowing the proximity and how close it is to the, um, yard, would be a preferred option in this sense, um, due to the potential damage of a, can't think of another word off my head right now, other fence methods.
Another item I'd like to add is we're planning on having steel posts, um, rather than cedar posts. And for that exact reason, cedar posts have a tendency to rot because of the moisture. So we'll have metal posts and concrete.
Commissioners, any additional questions for the applicant? Is there anyone else in the team? Oh, sorry, Al.
Anybody can answer if they want, but have you shown this to the complainant? The plan?
Um, yes, I cannot respond to that, um, Commissioner. Um, the plans were, or I should say, a notice for this meeting was provided to applicants in the area or the surrounding properties, so they are aware of what is going on with the proposed fencing. And it should be mitigating the concern.
All right, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda topic? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing at seven fourteen PM. Turn it over to the commissioners. Any discussion, motion? Commissioner Allen?
Go ahead.
No, I, I didn't hear what she said. We're waiting for a motion.
Yes.
Motion or discussion, yeah.
I have no discussion, but I have no motion either.
Can you, can you put the motion on the screen?
Yeah, sure.
That'll make it a lot easier for us.
Yes, no problem.
I can go ahead and, um,
Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. Staff, uh, I'll make the motion, the staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the city council the approval of the CUP to allow an open storage lot at one four four five zero Ewing Avenue South, subject to the fourteen conditions of approval.
Beautiful, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Commissioner Hamilton, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Moving on. Thank you. Agenda topic number five is also a public hearing of an application of Good, Good Shepherd Lutheran Church and School for a conditional use permit amendment to allow a maximum building height of thirty-three feet and approval of proof of parking at one fifty-one County Road forty-two East, also being presented by Ms. Chapman.
Thank you. Um, so the application tonight is to discuss Good Shepherd Lutheran Church and School for a conditional use permit amendment to allow a maximum building height of thirty-three feet tall and approval of proof of parking at one five one County Road forty-two E. Picture on the left-hand side is just an aerial image of the subject property. And the right-hand image is the zoning of the property and adjacent properties. Uh, the subject property is zoned R one, a residential district, single-family residential district, and is guided low-density residential in the twenty forty comprehensive plan. There are neighboring properties to the south, uh, east and southwest that are similarly zoned and guided. And I should also mention that, um, their neighbors directly to, uh, their west and south are also religious institutions as well. That would be, uh, Minnesota South District of Missouri Synod, um, and then also, um, Bering Baptist Church, church. So the subject property was constructed in the nineteen seventies. Uh, Good Shepherd moved to the location in nineteen ninety-three. And in two thousand and five, Good Shepherd submitted a conditional use permit for a twelve thousand two hundred and forty-five square foot addition. This addition was mainly consisted of classrooms just because of that increasing enrollment. At that time, they had, uh, one hundred and thirty stalls on-site and, uh, or they needed one hundred and thirty stalls at that time. They installed one hundred and forty-nine, so they had additionally nineteen extra stalls that they added despite that minimum requirement. The building permit, um, for their most recent addition for that nine thousand, uh, gymnasium addition was submitted in July twenty twenty-five, um, which consisted of a gymnasium, lobby space and bathrooms. That nine thousand five hundred square, nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four square foot addition doesn't meet the minimum parking stalls required. Um, as such, staff would like to memorialize the proof of parking for thirty stalls. Um, and this proposal is also to allow a maximum height of thirty-three feet tall for the existing sanctuary. Here is the site plan, um, just showing that, uh, addition of the property to the south, um, and south, uh, eastern portion. Um, and you can also see the proof of parking, um, on the southwest portion and on, and to the very northwest portion as well. And here is just a highlighted view of that addition. Um, as you can see, there's a gymnasium and then there's a lobby space and a few bathrooms outside of that gymnasium. And in this table, I broke down the calculation of how we got to the required, uh, minimum of parking stalls required. For gymnasiums, we calculate from one stall per four persons at maximum capacity. Uh, the maximum capacity at, uh, for the gymnasium was four hundred and sixty-one persons, which calculates to one hundred and fifteen stalls. The existing surplus of parking from that two thousand and five, uh, conditional permit was nineteen stalls. Total required, um, would be one hundred and fifteen minus nineteen, which equates to ninety-six stalls. The proof of parking that they submitted with us was for thirty stalls. And so taking into account the existing and the proof of parking, that would mean there would be one hundred and seventy-nine stalls. And here I just wanted to highlight where that exact proof of parking would be located. Um, as you can see, most of that proof of parking would be located to the southwestern portion of that property, extending off an existing parking lot. extending off an existing parking lot. And here's a rendering, um, of that elevation view and what you can see of that actual gymnasium addition. Um, it may be difficult to see in this picture, but there is quite a steep slope to that southeastern portion of that property. Um, and then I will go into height. Um, to city code 10733, allows structures to increase their height by 50%, uh, such as church spires, um, such as that existing sanctuary. When staff looked at it, um, we didn't think it necessarily looked like a church spire, but there isn't anything in our code that specifically defines church spire. Um, height is determined by the average elevation from the ground to the highest point of the flat roof. Um, the addition for this gymnasium would actually meet this average, uh, 30-foot requirement, even though it has, uh, the lowest portion of that building would be three and a half, 35 and a half feet. Um, and, but the average itself would be 30. Um, so overall, this height request is actually just for the existing sanctuary that is 33 feet tall, um, which is considered a legal non-conforming, uh, structure. The proposed addition meets all zoning code standards. The building expansion is not intended to accommodate additional students or congregation. At this time, proof of parking is sufficient in lieu of needing additional parking stalls. Um, and I should also mention that there were alternatives to, um, reducing parking. That's through, uh, the DRC review and then also doing a parking agreement. Um, we did bring that up to the applicant for doing a parking agreement, but they prefer to do a proof of parking. Um, but I should also note that they do have, um, not a recorded, like parking agreement, but during times where they know that there may be events that are maybe a funeral or where they know they're going to have a high number of people coming to it, they reciprocate and tell their neighbors, um, to use their, their parking onsite. And they reciprocate that as well with their neighbors. Staff recommends that planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the conditional use permit amendment for a maximum building height of 33 feet and approval for proof of parking at one 51 County Road 42E, subject to the following conditions. The project shall be completed in accordance with the submitted plans and as amended by the conditions of approval. Any significant changes to the plans as determined by the planning staff shall require review and approval by planning commission and city council. All conditions in the previous conditional use permit from 2005 are still in full effect. If more than five parking complaints within three months are received regarding parking, the applicant shall construct the submitted proof of parking found in the building permit. The owner shall attempt to avoid utilizing the gymnasium simultaneous, simultaneously as when service is in session. I should mention that the applicant does not intend to use this at the same time services in session, but we wanted to provide this condition not to prevent them from having that happen, but to encourage it to prevent parking conflicts. The maximum building height shall not exceed 33 feet in height. The conditional use permit shall be signed and returned to the planning staff for recording prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, a storm water management agreement shall be signed and supplied to staff for recording with Dakota County Recorder's Office. In the event that a future building permit is submitted, increasing the maximum occupancy of the building, the proof of parking shall be constructed as part of the building permit supplemental. In the event the proposed proof of parking does not support the proposed use of the property, the owner shall enter into a cross parking agreement with the neighboring property prior to the issuance of a building permit. That is all I have. And so I will turn it back to the planning commission for any comments or questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. All right, commissioners.
Now to clarify, the gymnasium itself is a flat-roofed building, but because of the typography of the lot, some of it exceeds 30 feet.
Yes, that's correct. Um, so, but the overall, we calculate the height of that building as the average of those elevations. So even though they have a dip into that 30, 35 and a half feet, the average itself is 30. So it is meeting code requirements. This is mainly for the sanctuary that is not meeting that requirement.
Commissioner Lo?
For, you mentioned this is, uh, this came about as part of their July 2025 permit application.
Correct.
Is the application still in process or has it? Um, and the reason I ask is that some of these conditions were tied to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy rather than the issuance of the building permit.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah. So that's a good question. We did approve a building permit, but we made a condition that we would not, um, allow a certificate of occupancy until the conditional use permit is approved. Um, that was just to get this pro, this project going and to make this process, um, faster for them, especially since it is getting to the colder season that time of year.
That's, that's where I was headed. Thank, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Good question. Commissioner Lo?
Could you clarify just the proof of parking doesn't mean today, but that could be added on later? That's, that's what that means, correct?
Yep. So proof of parking, so by recording this with the county, if there are, and we made a condition about this, if we receive, I think it was five complaints over three months, then they would have to actually initiate and execute that proof of parking. So we're just having them memorialize this in case that were to happen. Um, we mainly, from a planning perspective, we didn't know, well, we wanted to keep this in a condition just in case maybe this was sold later down the road and, road and uses may change. Um, we just wanted to do that to protect whoever is owning that property.
Okay. And it. But so proof of parking means there's land available on their property to expand their parking if so needed.
Correct. Yes.
And a preliminary design on here's how we're going to get X number more stalls.
Yes, correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Continue, continue. One moment. Commissioner Lo?
Yeah. Um, I assume there's been no complaints to date?
Uh, I have not received any complaints, not that I'm aware of. And in their project narrative, they seem to have sufficient parking already during the school time and also during service. Um, but this is just, as mentioned previously, in case this changes hands or there are future complaints just because of that addition.
Do we know if they are cross-using other parking lots at the same time today? Like, I'm curious how busy it really is at peak times, right? Are they always utilizing the other ones today?
Yeah. I mean, that's a good question. I, I believe the applicant is in the audience today. They can always answer that question and elaborate on that as well.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Anderson?
I would really watch the parking because I know of a situation, not in Burnsville, where there's a gymnasium and a church and the demand for the gymnasium at the time the church is in session is significant. So you, just make sure that you are aware of that.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. In, in the project narrative, they did mention that it was only going to be used for, um, their athletic team, for their school. Um, so it was mainly intended for their existing school. Um, but I mean, we can also ask the applicant as well, but it's not intended to increase the number of students or any outside groups.
The demand for the building might exceed, uh, desire right now and just to have their own teams in there.
Sure.
To add on to that comment, um, Commissioner, that is a good question, comment. And as part of approval, that's why we request the applicant to provide a narrative and a plan on how they're going to utilize that space. Um, and in the narrative, they state that they're not going to run it concurrently. That document's approved by this body and then the city council. So we have that document to fall back on saying, your approved supplemental documents state, you're not going to use these at the same times. In the event that does happen, we do have a fallback mechanism. We had a similar concern with the other applicant. What was that one we?
Eden Baptist.
Eden Baptist. Very similar concern. You're a hundred percent. That is usually what happens. And so that's why we have, like to have that narrative with that site plan or something to fall back on in the event that doesn't happen.
Commissioner Lo?
Just a clarification, the five complaints, uh, parking complaints that would trigger it to be reviewed, who, who's, where do the complaints go? Is that police department, their building, planning? I mean, who, and how do you keep track of who, the five complaints?
So I can follow on, Commissioner Lo. So generally what we do is on these applications like this, once a year, we reach out to the police department and we, um, see where the complaints are at. Also, we have a monthly DRC meeting where we do bring up these items where we identify, DRC again is Development Review Committee, where we do talk about these items. And so we do keep track on that way. And so we have a couple of other projects in the community where we do reach out monthly and ask if there's been any parking complaints so we can track these standards. But a lot of times what happens is the applicant will put in the proof of parking before we ever get complaints. There, they know their site. If it's not working, they usually work on installing the proof of parking or they go and get the cross parking easements. To my knowledge, um, not to speak for the applicant, when they get up here, they have previously stated that, um, they do hold some bigger events where parking is an issue, but they have those handshake agreements and it goes vice versa for those churches in that general area. So they all kind of work together.
With that, I think I'm going to open the public hearing. There's no other questions for staff at 7:30 PM. Applicant, did you wish to come to the podium, invite your name and address for the record?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Rick Osberg. Uh, I'm a properties chairman for Good Shepherd Lutheran Church at one 51 County Road 42 East. Uh, thank you for your time and considering this matter this evening. Um, I've been with the church since 1993 and almost when we acquired this property, um, and serving on, uh, various committees, but largely with property care and management for probably half of that time span. So I have some history on attendance as man of makeup of the, of the building and the parking and so forth. Um, the, I want to add the one clarification about the new building height. So alongside of our, our hill, as the, as the ground starts to drop away towards the, uh, the street behind us, that corner of the gym, um, will have the ground elevation drop to the corner and back up again. And it's behind the trees. So you get a effectively a exposed wall height, um, higher than the typical that you'd see anywhere else around that portion of the building. So that, but averages out, you know, um, meeting the code of under 30 feet. Um, with respect to, uh, parking, we, we, our congregation generally is kind of just, just a little couple, two years before COVID had come, so our peak attendance. And we didn't really have any issues with parking. And we, we added a service on a Thursdays for other people, more opportunities for people to worship, so they're not there at the same time. When we have a, um, a, a large community event like trunk or treat, uh, we, we reach out to our two neighbors, Burgeon and, uh, Minnesota South District for our, our, like volunteers will park in their parking lots and then the guests that come can use our, our main parking lot. And we use the west side for trunk or treat or whatever event that we have. It's been working out pretty good. Um, I'm pleased with the conditions that, I mean, working with the staff that they came to our building, reviewed our, our business model and how we, you know, carry out our, our daily activities at the school, in the church, and the timing of such things, um, and looked at how to present different solutions. And, um, the proof of parking, um, seems a good option, although I've gotten, I mean, Missouri South, they're in a South District, they're so friendly. You know, they just, you know, park them whenever you want to. It doesn't matter. And they have one, an occasional conference and they'll use our lot as well. So, um, so the solutions that are in the, um, proposed approval are, meet our needs. So, um, if you have any other questions, uh, ask me. Sure.
So I went by the property today and it looks like there's some type of construction already taking place on the west side.
That's correct.
Is that takeaway parking or what?
Uh, yes. For the term of the construction, um, the, the portion on the west side of the building.
Yeah.
Is a staging area currently for about six or seven months. That'll last. And that, that, so that's, that has, um, diminished our available parking for the construction period.
And that's for the construction of the gymnasium, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioners, any more questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. All right. With that, I can close the public hearing at 7:34 PM and open it up for discussion. Any discussion, commissioners?
No.
Commissioner Lo?
Uh, it seems pretty straightforward. I'd be willing to make a motion unless somebody else has a comment or question. All right, I'm going for it. So I, uh, I move that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the conditional use permit amendment for a maximum building height of 33 feet and approval for proof of parking at one 51 County Road 42 East, subject to the listed conditions.
We have a motion.
Second.
Very much. All right. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye, aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you very much. All right. Agenda topic number six, um, is updates. Staff?
All right. So the only update I have for tonight was at the last plan commission. The plan commission reviewed, um, the application for a long-term care facility at the Hampton Inn. Um, that item was on the city council's agenda, um, last week at the September 16th meeting. At that time, the plan, or city council decided to table the item to allow for staff and the applicant to work on a couple of conditions, um, mainly around an upscaling staffing plan and, um, client plan, a number of beds, uh, for additional outreach, the applicant to do additional outreach to some neighboring businesses and, um, bring it back to the October 21st meeting for additional discussion. So currently we're working with the applicant on those items and I'll be back before the council on the 21st. And that's the only update I have for tonight. Thank you everyone for your help with those items. Great discussion. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Any update from commissioners? I should have asked that. All right. Seeing none. That leads us to our last agenda topic, which is adjournment. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And that's it.
And now we have a picture to take.
Yes.